Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Montpelier City Council. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Well, the no Green Mountain Transit.
Okay, any others? Okay, if not, we'll consider the without objection, agenda will be approved with that, or with that change. Next item is general business and appearance. Anybody here to comment on anything that's not our agenda? It doesn't look like it. Move to the consent agenda. Do you have motion to approve that?
So moved.
Any discussion? If there are none, in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Post. And zoning. This is our final hearing on the zoning and river hazard regulations. This is a public hearing, so anyone who wants to comment on that, this would be the opportunity to do that. Mike?
Aye.
For your last, hopefully, final appearance before the council on zoning for the rest of your life. I'll bet you hope.
One would hope. I won't bet you that.
I thought we were promised another in six months.
We live longer than that.
That's true. It only feels like an eternity.
Yes. So I guess the only thing I will preface this discussion on was the email that I sent you this afternoon, if there were any questions on that. So really, we approved on the 20th, you approved on the 20th, the final changes. We incorporated those changes, put those changes online. And we recognize, I recognized at the time we had put it online, that there were some weird things that had happened to the formatting, some indenting that had happened, and in one section of the, like, 3204, for whatever reason, it lost its numeration, so it didn't have numbering. So I was like, alright, well, we'll get it online, because we need to put it online, and we'll send it off to Brandy, the consultant, to figure out what's up with the formatting. She re-formatted and got it back to me today. Where we noticed the weird thing that we've been chasing for a while, which is that every time we change a thing, it'll say C Section 3004.D. And we're like, well, that's the wrong section, we'll fix it. Well, every time we save it, the Word document goes back and goes and says, oh, that's the wrong one, we'll put it back to 3004.D. So what was online had a half dozen or a dozen of these little references. So I went through the entire document, double-checking back to make sure that, you know, we had what was in the approved draft, the correct citations, and so I cleaned those up. And what I basically had to do is to break, break the link. So in the original document, if you saw one of those, C 3004, you literally could take your mouse and click on it, and it would send you there. Well, now it's not going to send you there. Because what it would do if we left it there was send you to the wrong place. So that was the only way I could get to fix it. I'm sure there's a pretty, more elegant way of doing it, but... So what you do have, what I did email you, was the correct version, so if you were to look in your footnote, on the footnote, it would say final draft, January 3, 2018. And I made three final copies, in case there was somebody who wanted a hard copy, just as...
So we had a lot of changes at our last meeting?
Yep.
And I'm sure, well, maybe others have been diligent and read it and cross-checked against all the requests, but I suspect there are a lot of haven, and we're going to find, you know, there'll be people who scrub it and say, well, that's not really what... But if that happens, what is, what are the, what's the avenue? How would we, how do we change? Like, if somebody says, you did this, and it's not reflected accurately here, what's the process for fixing that?
Okay. I hope that the way I'd done it, we would have very few of those, but yeah.
And we may not have any, I just...
Yeah. So what was put online, first of all, for anyone who did want to go and diligently double-check to make sure we had done it all right, there is also a strikeout copy from what was done on the 20th, you know, based on, or what was done pre-hearing to post-hearing, there was a strikeout copy that was made as well. So if you really wanted to see what changes were made and approved on the 20th, those are all in there in the strikeout. If you want to go and fix it, probably the fastest way to fix a mistake like that, we would have to go through and do an interim zoning amendment, which is a relatively short process if we found one that was wrong. We could always check with our legal counsel to go through and see if, if there was a mistake that was approved, and we adopt this, and find out that there was a change that was supposed to have been made that wasn't, I don't know if we can just go and do it. But I'm, I've never, I've never had, had a case come up like that, so I really would just have to check with legal counsel.
Well, sort of...
The worst-case scenario is you do an interim zoning amendment to make that correction.
Okay. Rosie, did you...
I just wanted to make sure that the changes you made with breaking the links don't affect the fact that we properly warned.
No, it wouldn't. In fact, it's actually by breaking the links, you had to, to actually get it correct. Because in, in the matrix, you said, you know, approve, fix, change 300D to 3005. And so I make that change, I save it, I put it online, and it automatically changes it back to what it was, incorrect. So correcting it doesn't actually change what was approved.
And the links are, you know, a convenience tool, they're not really the substance, you know, because you're still, the end link is the actual regulation approved, so...
Do we need to make a motion?
So, yeah, if there are no other comments, we'll pause the hearing and accept the motion.
Is that in the format? I make a motion to accept the master plan as presented? No. Zoning as presented, sorry.
We've got a unified, unified development regulations is one to be adopted, and the river hazard regulations is the other.
Okay. John Oden, do you have a question?
And the river hazard?
River hazard regulations.
Your motion is to accept the unified development regulations and river hazard regulations?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's very discussion. If there are none, in favor please say aye.
Aye.
I'll post. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Mike, for all of your incredible work.
I brought way more than I needed. You're expecting more, Mike?
Ready to meet her, though?
Mike, I'll take a final copy.
Happy problem.
That's the way scared questions away.
He's been worn down. All right, great work, everyone. Big accomplishment. Okay, I don't see Jeff Byer here. Is he the person we're going to be looking at for the Hubbard Park land?
Yeah, I don't see him either.
Okay. So, see, Jack, you're here. Jack, are you going to be, are you waiting on anybody else for the, you ready to go? Great. Okay, so we'll move to item eight, the housing trust fund. And Kevin Casey with the planning development. You're welcome.
Sure. Okay, good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Jack McCullough, the Chair of the Montpelier Housing Task Force, and I'm here to talk about the proposal for the housing trust fund for fiscal 2019. And as I talk about it, what I, I think we really have a two-part message to tell you tonight. One is that the Housing Task Force is taking, and we believe the city should be taking, a progressive, forward-looking approach to how we structure these programs and address not simply the issues that we have today, but the issues that we can anticipate having in years to come, so that we can continue to make progress toward, toward the goals that the city has recognized for some time, of developing new housing, making new housing possible within the city, and making it affordable for people who want to live here and become contributing members of our community. And so that's one of our messages today, and we think that our proposal will move us along in that direction. And the second message is that we want to be responsive to the concerns that we've had, heard from the council in previous sessions, and you'll see that the proposal we've worked for you today addresses the concerns that we've had, and I hope, I hope that message comes across well. What we've talked about, and the full dollar amount is not set forth in our proposal, but our goal, our message is, is to really do the four things. One is to maintain the base funding of $60,000 that we had this year to enable us to carry on with the homeowner, the new homeowner down payment assistance program. And we documented how successful it's been, how we've been able, how the program has enabled people to move into the city, and that's what we want, move people to move here, recognizing that it's somewhat more expensive to live here in Montpelier than in our neighboring towns, but it's a benefit to the city, have new families move into the city. And we know how to do the program, it works well. The grant originally was $15,000 for a down payment assistance, assistance payment, it's now $10,000. The way that the payment works that time, it's provided to the, as a check at closing. So as the payment, all the documents and all the funds that are changing hands at the closing include that, the mortgage and the $10,000 payment. The promissory note, it's all there as part of the package. So as the closing goes forward, this is part of what happens to enable the family to close on their purchase. And we think it's vital to, to some of these, some of these purchases. We recognize that we're not going to grow the city's population, six families at a time, in the down payment assistance program, so we're looking at other, other sources of revenue and other uses of revenue, too. Our experience has been that every few years, the Downstreet comes in with a proposal to really change the housing market by creating new housing in the city, new affordable housing in the city, and we have the French block across the street, which is well on the way, and we can anticipate that happening again. If we're stuck at $60,000 a year, we're not going to be able to get there. But what we've seen in the programs funded by the trust fund is that we've actually added money to the, to the grant list. We've generated tax revenue by the investments the city council has made in the trust fund. And we propose to reinvest 25% of the incremental value each year in, in the trust fund going forward. This year, fiscal 2019, this would amount to almost $30,000, so 29, 664, 75 in, in additional funds to the trust fund if the council dedicates 25% of the incremental taxes for one year to the trust fund.
Is that, just to clarify a question on that, is that be 25% of the new value for any investment or any money, or project that has received funding, any funding from the trust fund?
Yes.
So the trust fund, we put in $8,000, and somebody puts in a million dollars, that results in $200,000, to make a number, in revenue, you take 25% of that, even though the initial contribution was 8,000, a small incremental contribution?
In answer to the question of how that would work, I would say yes, that's how it would work. What I would say, I'd go beyond that, to say that in a number of projects, having that local contribution from the city's trust fund is one of the things that was able to bring in other funds. So, yeah, it's not, it's not just, well, $8,000 is nothing on a million-dollar project. The money that comes from the city could be the difference between a project happening and not. The third source of fund which we propose is to dedicate 25% of the rooms and meals, the local option rooms and meals tax to the trust fund. And I don't know if there's statistics that we've seen yet, but anecdotally, what we're hearing is that the entities like Airbnb have, have really had an effect on the, on the housing market in Montpelier. The people who could be renting property out to permanent renters, yeah, they can rent it out three or four weekends a month and generate the revenue, and take that off the housing market, make the housing unavailable for people who want to move in here as renters. And so in recognition of the fact that the rental market, the temporary rental market is having an effect on the housing market, we propose also 25% of the local rooms and meals tax to go to the trust fund. And again, for fiscal 2019, the projection is 218,000, so the total, 25% of that would be 54,500. So the total request would be 144,164.75, if we're sticking to all the individual dollars and pennies.
Can I just ask Bill a question there? We don't currently levy the rooms and meals tax on Airbnbs, or we don't have a way of doing that? Or we do, but people don't necessarily do it?
We levy the tax on anything the state levies the tax on.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't administrate ourselves, so whatever the state collects on, so I think the state is working on collecting the tax, you know, rooms taxes on Airbnb's.
The way it works is the director, the person who endorsed the Airbnb doesn't pay the homeowner directly, they pay the company, that company sends the tax money.
Okay, so we are successfully collecting taxes on those?
As of, I think, January of 17.
Okay, I remember hearing some stuff about not being able to tax those.
I think it was, went into effect in January 17, not positive.
It's just not an individual, individual city-controlled.
What was that total you gave there?
144, 164, 75. And then the last piece of the picture, which is not something that we're saying, this is money to put into the 2019 budget, but that is recapture funds for beneficiaries for the first-time homebuyer program. We've heard what you said, that people are needy when they come into the program, they, their prospects improve, they may not be hurt by paying it back. And so the proposal is, as a program design, that if the family's income has, has grown, they're, they're no longer at that 125% level, then when they sell the house, the money would come back if they're in there. But obviously, we don't have the dollar enough, because that's not happening yet, but we can anticipate over time that that would go to increase the fund. And so that's, that's our request, and we'd ask, and hope you can support and build in the budget the way we structured it.
Hey, did you have a question, or questions?
So Kevin and I had a really productive conversation a couple weeks ago, prior to the previous meeting, when we thought we were going to talk about this, about a bunch of other ways that we could get at this problem, and kind of make housing more accessible. And there were, we had a lot of creative ideas, and so I would like to propose that rather than dedicating, you know, saying, here's our $60,000 this year, we want it to go to this one project, specifically the first-time homebuyers program, I would like to instruct the task force and the trust fund to consider some of those alternatives that we discussed, and some of those included taking some of the revolving loan funds we have, and combining them, and figuring out ways to make that money more accessible, to hit some of these problems that we've talked about having. And so I want to continue to work on this, and I don't want to limit ourselves by saying, here's $60,000, it's going to first-time homebuyers. Because I think that if we do some more work here, we can come up with an even better way of spending that money. I, you know, I've talked before about how I'm concerned that first-time homebuyers, while it's not terrible, it isn't the best use of that money, and so I kind of like the opportunity to explore that more by not locking us into spending the money that way. And then if the trust fund decides that after those discussions, that is the best way, then I, you know, that they could present that to the council in the future. But I want to create some space for that conversation to happen.
So you would be, just wanted to have time to work and meet with the...
And I will commit to working more closely with the task force on some of those ideas.
Well, we'd love to see it.
Yeah.
Third Thursday, if I may.
I've already been told.
As I understand the budget appropriation, I think it's $60,000 to the trust fund. I don't think it specifically says this is how it shall be paid. So I don't think any change would need to be done tonight to...
And I would just want to make it clear that we weren't sending a message from the council to the trust fund that this is exactly how we wanted it spent, because we want to allow them to have that flexibility to, to think through those things.
Well, I guess to that end, I mean, I wonder if we should be at least saying, you know, we anticipate spending $60,000 on this fund, and we'll discuss how, how it ought to be allocated, and, and that's a discussion I think we probably can have, I just don't want to miss the opportunity to, you know, maintain our level of support of the fund, so...
No, and I'm in support of continuing to, to set $60,000 aside for housing, I just don't want to lock us into this one particular avenue.
Sure. I totally agree with you, although I would say that the message we'd like to hear is, we're going to devote $144,000 to the fund, and for that, discussion at the task force and the trust fund board of how to spend.
And just as by way of background, we had this discussion, and it was actually before Rosie was on, and Ashley were on, last year, and the Housing Task Force request comes out of, they looked at the $140,000 number, was actually a function of looking at first-time homebuyers as well as projects. So if you were to fully fund projects and programs currently, that's what the, and to build the reserve, the 140,000 would do that. Build the reserve, fund the first-time homebuyers, and fund projects on a four- to five-year basis. So this, this number, although it seems very large, it's actually, it's, it's, there was a bunch of work put into it last year, and I'm happy to share that with everybody, to, the task force put a lot of work into that in November of 16?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was before the...
It's been a couple of times, I think, but yeah.
But I'll circulate that for everybody, too, so they have it going forward.
I'm also comfortable supporting the city manager's recommendation that we hold funding at $60,000 for this year. I do applaud your creativity in many of these new recommendations. I'd like to ask a couple questions, if I may, to help better understand this, and also to confirm a couple things. Thank you very much for including the possibility of a payback. I think that was Councilor Krueger who thought about maybe the unintended consequence there, or Mayor Holler's suggestion that, well, you know, I may have qualified this when I bought my house, and now that I've established myself, why wouldn't I be expected to put this money back into the trust fund? I guess I, the only adjustment I would suggest is that you consider changing the 125% of median income to 100%? I mean, that's sort of right in the middle, and presumably below that number, you're, you do need assistance and help, and if you're above that, you may not. So, just one thought there.
Just inside, just on that one, the, it's actually supposed to be 120, 120%, but that 120% is the state's threshold for affordability. That's where that, just...
So if you're, if you're making 120, well, 20% higher than the median income, is that, would be correct, then, that then you wouldn't necessarily need a subsidy?
Correct.
Right, okay. So I guess I'm just questioning that assumption as a policy matter, but I can appreciate wanting it to be the same as the state level. Didn't know if there's a quick update in terms of when the French block may be ready to have people move in? I know it's a complicated project, but is there any sort of tentative date at which this housing will be completed and available to people?
I haven't heard anything in the last month or two.
Yeah, the last thing, they're opening bids in mid-December, and preparing to award contracts.
On the grant side...
Right around now, and, you know, start work in the next month or so, once they get all that iron out. But, you know, I don't know how long the project takes once they start work.
And on the grant side, it's just, there's, you know, finishing up fine details on the response, so it's close, it's, you know, they're moving forward.
Anticipate construction beginning then this year?
Yeah, sure.
And then maybe a year or two to complete all that, or, I mean, any sort of timeframe here in terms of when it will be available?
I think it's supposed to be completed in 2018, right? And moved in, I think, it's, my, my understanding, and, and again, we'd have to confirm this with Downstreet, but that they were supposed to start construction or demolition this winter, and be fully engaged by the spring.
Great. Great news. In regards to your suggestion around rooms and meals, I'd just comment that we were, this council, or the previous council was very specific when putting this before voters, that this new tax that we were proposing was going to be used for infrastructure and economic development, and I didn't know if you were intending us to add on a quarter percent, or to then shift the way that those monies were being spent?
Well, no, we're not talking about adding anything to the tax, but I think it's, it's very clear, not only from market experts around the state, but also even from our own economic development report, that housing development is economic development. Housing development is one of the things that enables us to have thriving park economies, and we've already targeted that as an important goal, or important economic development goal.
Thank you.
So I think that keeps faith, keeps, keeps the party with the taxpayers and the voters to do it.
Does anybody know if the, like, Airbnb taxes are separated? Like, can you tell exactly how much revenue was generated by Airbnb rentals?
That would be State Tax Department would have to do that. We just get it as a bulk, this is how much was collected in your city for rooms and meals.
Right, right. But if we can see the state data, and if the state data has it broken down, I would be totally comfortable with Airbnb, you know, with the percentage of Airbnb stuff going to affordable housing, if that, if that breakdown exists.
It's probably just lumped under rooms collection, but we'd have to look.
I don't know if they would do it for a single pair, because I think that that would be, I don't know, I could find out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm curious if they do. Airbnb might have it.
I don't know.
And then I guess my second piece is, I was just looking at some information from the latest census, and I, I feel pretty strongly that even 125% of median income in Vermont is still a pretty low dollar amount when you look, I mean, compared to states around us, our median income is the lowest compared to Massachusetts and New Hampshire and New York. And, you know, just, just myself, in my own experience, looking at the rental market, and, you know, sort of what is and isn't affordable, and, and how few choices there are, you know, and if homebuyership is even an option for you at 125%, I mean, that's pretty amazing. So I feel pretty strongly that, that 125% should just be the baseline, and maybe we should even explore going a little higher than that, because that's really not that much money, and if the goal is to bring in, you know, young families with children, and you're only talking about 125%, you're still pricing out a whole bunch of people from the Montpelier housing market.
We definitely are, and, you know, you can say, well, 100% of median is right in the middle, that's true, but when you look at incomes in comparison to housing costs in, in, like, Montpelier, you are, you're absolutely right.
Preaching to the choir.
You're really squeezed.
Yeah. So perhaps I'm just being a little methodical about this, but, so there were four proposals. I mean, I am, I've already mentioned, I'm very much in favor of the first one of at least maintaining $60,000. As far as the, you know, reinvestment of money from projects that we are donating to, I think that makes a lot of sense, and if we can take that increased grant list... And, uh, if we can take that increased grand list, uh, revenue, put it back into affordable housing, which is a deep need in this city, uh, then that is a worthwhile endeavor. Uh, and then, you know, it's, it's the kind of thing that I think once we have too much affordable housing, then maybe we can think about readjusting that number. But we are so far from it right now that, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of that. Um, and then, uh, you know, I, I had the same thought too, Justin, about the meals, rooms and alcohol tax. You know, when we proposed this, it, uh, had certain, uh, you know, ideas. But I, I appreciate your, your thoughts there, Jack, about, you know, that this, uh, affordable housing is, is economic development. It's bringing more people into town. It's, uh, I mean, part of the EDSP was, uh, about housing, um, and that's, that this is, this is doing that. One of the things that I, uh, I guess, I, so forgive me for my, my confusion here. Um, how much money were you proposing coming out of the twenty-five percent for meals, rooms and alcohol?
Fifty-four, five.
Fifty-four, so, um, and that's in addition, I mean, we're already allocating, what, like a hundred thousand dollars from that to-
The development corporation.
The development corporations. So how much does that, do we know how much that leaves?
Well, it's a, the, the budget revenue is two hundred and eighteen thousand. So the remainder, a hundred and eighteen thousand is revenue offsetting, you know, the capital.
Um, so there's plenty of, uh, room, uh, for that.
No, it's going to CFP.
Oh, sorry, CFP. Thank you. Well, anyway, I'm willing to talk about that one. Um, and then the, um, recapture funds, um, I think that, I think that plan also makes some sense. You know, keeping this, uh, you know, money for people who, who really need it. So, um, yeah, willing to talk about three, but I'm in favor of one, two and four.
I really appreciate every time you come, you come with solid data and new ideas. And I would love to see the council explore more of these, if not in this budget, certainly in future budgets. They're all good ideas.
I'd like to follow up on something that councillor Watson said, which is we're so far from achieving an appropriate level of affordable housing. You may remember several years ago, I asked what sort of our comparable communities or neighboring communities, what is their sort of target level of the percentage of total housing stock that, and I know there's a couple of different definitions there in terms of making it fully subsidized or partially subsidized or just providing incentives. Do you have any numbers for us in terms of, um, how, what percentage we do have that is benefiting from some sort of subsidy in total housing stock? And what, second question would be, what a sort of an appropriate target might be? And are we, so then we can figure out, are we apt, do we need to keep adding more faster? Are we already in excess of that? It would help us to kind of guide that process.
Well, I think, I mean, and, and I've provided these numbers before and Jack, or, uh, the housing task force as well. It's, um, it's, there's a certain nuance to it because it's, it's not as simple as it looks. And, and, and it really gets at, at, at the core of, um, you know, like Downstreet does, you know, some of their, their units are market rate. So, you know, that's, you, you can't just say like, oh, all of their project, all of their units are affordable housing. They're an affordable housing project, but they are, some of those are set aside as market rate.
You know which ones are market, which ones aren't. I mean, can't you just count the ones that are-
But then there's the, the other, you can't, you have to be careful because then you can double count. Because some of those, for example, if you have Downstreet, but then you have a section eight voucher, you can have a section eight voucher which is, which is paying for your, you know, a portion of your unit if you're very low income. But you have to be careful to not double count that. Because if I just look at the number of section eight vouchers, that will give me one number. But then I have to kind of cross-reference it with the other existing units, which takes, um, but as far as appropriate number, I, I, no.
So there is no way to count the number of subsidized housing?
There is, and we did that a few years ago.
That seems like that would be a-
It is, but it's not as, um, it, it, it takes a fair amount of groundwork from Downstreet, Mountier Housing Authority, all the kind of players that, that have either, you know, a, a subsidy, a voucher, a unit, and then they have to kind of-
And what is the city's target number or percentage?
There is not a target number.
We don't have one.
You're here or anywhere else. It's not the way-
Right.
Government entities think about, uh, housing programs. The other thing that I could say, and I don't have these statistics with me, although I have, having it back at my office, is that the, the number of low, what you might consider low income housing, subsidized housing units in the city is smaller than the number of, uh, housing units, subsidized housing units that people like me occupy in the city. That the, uh, the mortgage interest deduction and the property tax, uh, tax break are, exceed the, uh, number of subsidized housing.
I, I understand, I read the full report from before and I did my best to understand it certainly, that there is a lot of nuance here. And I can appreciate even within one unit, you have a huge spectrum in terms of the percentage of the total rent that the people that are living in those units are paying. So I get that there's a ton of gray area here. I guess I'm just expressing that it's difficult to make, uh, funding decisions without, A, having a sort of a general target that we're trying to achieve, or B, having any metrics, even the most liberal, for how we might measure where we are today.
Well, if you're, well, I think that there is a way to do it. I mean, if you look at, we want to have a healthy housing market. So most experts agree that a healthy housing market has about five percent vacancy. We are currently operating at about functional zero. So that, you know, and if you talk to, and that's what the census will tell you, that's what, you know, Vermont housing data will tell you, there were, you know, below one percent. And if you talk to your landlords, um, they will tell you that their only vacancies are when they're doing work on an apartment or if there's a fire, um, or if, that's, that's when you have vacancies. Otherwise, you're, you're just, you know, hot bunking people. They're, they're moving out and you're moving somebody right in and which actually affects quality as well. So, you know, um, you know, your healthy housing market has five percent vacancy. So what we can do from a government entity is work on affordable housing. Because that's where we can, that's where, you know, our funding sources come from. That's, that's, you know, we're, 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 we're helping where the market fails. So if, you know, the, the true market rate would be, is, is significantly higher than what I think most people, um, find palatable. Uh, you know, you see this with what the proposed rents for new projects are, and they are astonishingly high.
And I guess that's kind of where maybe I'm getting a little confused is if there's such high demand for housing and that potentially, um, that rents are perhaps higher than they should be because of that limited supply, why are we seeing so little growth in our grand list?
Growth in our grand list or growth in our units?
Excuse me, new, new units coming online.
Well, I, I mean, that is, that's a, that's the kind of the million dollar question that has come up again and again. And, and part of it is that, you know, like if I'm a developer, I can develop in Chittenden County and build a unit for the exact same amount of money. But I can charge more for rent. And although our rents are high, they're not high enough to reach the breaking point where it becomes, um, uh, it makes more sense to, to develop here. And we saw that with Redstone. They said, you know, it's, the, the costs are higher than what our return is. And, and, you know, unfortunately, what we're going to have to see is higher rents before the market, you know, the market corrects itself, or we have an intervention of some sort.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Thank you very much for your work, Jack and Kevin, for your staff support.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, I saw Jeff Meyer come in, I believe. Jeff, you want to join us to talk about proposed Hubbard Park land, or Hubbard, yeah, land purchase adjacent to Hubbard Park?
All right. So I'll talk in general terms as I understand it.
Jeff, you're going to have to move the mic.
Stereo. I talk in general terms because I understand that land purchase issues, uh, otherwise need to go into, uh, executive session, but correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. So- Just to address that question. Yeah. Land purchases are, are an allowable topic of executive session when, um, there is a, a clear disadvantage to the party. So for example, if we were discussing negotiating this purchase and we wanted to talk about, well, you know, offer this, but we'll take this and those kinds of things, you wouldn't do that no concession. If you're in a situation where the, the, if, if, as you're, as I understand you presenting it, here's the price, here's the product, property, it's just do we buy it or not? Um, it is, I, I don't know that it would meet that test of there being a disadvantage to the council unless there was a negotiating point they wanted to discuss. All right, um-
So I think, just to then follow up on that point, I think it'd leave it to your discretion to draw, tell us when you think that this, an open session discussion would disadvantage the city in some way and then we could-
Right, right.
It sounds like it's a general matter, it's appropriate for us to talk about that in public.
Great, okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, great, thanks. Park commission and I have been, um, pursuing the potential for, uh, a land addition purchase on Hubbard Park for several reasons over the past several years. And a couple of them being the continuing growing pressures on Hubbard Park and some conflicts of use and then having some more, uh, choices to do more. And the two particular, uh, things that are, uh, are for possibilities are, one, having, uh, a trail that would be a leash or a no leash thing. Because when you have historic uses, it's, uh, I think you probably can relate and you try to change them, it's, it's a lot harder than if you have a new piece and then you have a, a, a new use. And we saw that in North Branch Park when we established a multi-use trail. There is absolutely no resistance and it's welcomed and it's been very popular for, for everyone. If you try to do that same thing, we've had people come to meetings very upset and concerned with a possible conversion of a trail to a multi-use in Hubbard Park, um, when mountain bikes are brought up. So with the, with the new trail, we would have that option. Not that either of those are set in stone. The park commission would want to get the land and then have public meetings and then try to get the highest and best use given community input. So that's a rough background. So we, I have walked this, 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 this land, I've been in conversation with landowners for, ooh, actually over four or five years. And, uh, now, in this past year, uh, finally both landowners were willing and interested and agreed up to a, uh, fair market appraised value. We got the appraisal and they both agreed to the price of the appraisal. So, and that's why I'm here today to seek your approval to go forward with this purchase in part, in, in large part using Park Impact fee money that is still available. That's the, that's my background.
Questions for Jeff?
Not a question, but a thank you.
Rosie?
Feeling I'm going to be, um, in the minority here, but I am going to be opposed to this purchase. And the reason is that I have taken a look at where our parkland is in the city and I think there's a real inequity. And it's my, you know, my own district, District One, has an abundance of parks. Um, and the other districts, District Three in particular, but, um, you know, going out the further reaches of District Two as well, um, have no parks, no playgrounds. There is no place in walking distance that, you know, a family can, can take their kids for a public playground or, um, you know, that there's public park access. And the use of this fourteen thousand dollars, that closes out this fund. And we're going to see some real budget constraints over the next ten years. We heard the other day about an anticipated hundred thousand to four hundred thousand dollar, increased need in aging infrastructure and the wastewater, water recovery facility per year over the next ten years. In addition, we've heard, um, over the, the past few months about how over the next fifteen years, we're going to see, uh, our retiree population go from one-third, sorry, one-sixth of the population to one-third of the population. And so, um, we are going to have that much greater of a population that's on a fixed income and our ability to increase property taxes to pay for these services is going to really decline. So I'm very concerned that if we spend this money now, this is kind of our last shot at acquiring new parkland, I think. I don't think that there's going to be appetite in future councils to spend more money. Not just appetite, but ability. You know, we may want to do those things, but we're not going to be able to because we're going to have these real pressing infrastructure needs. And so I can't justify spending that last fourteen thousand dollars to add to a park in an area of the city that already has so much access while, you know, potentially precluding, um, you know, maybe, uh, adding some parkland along the future bike trail, um, to put a playground over there, um, maybe doing a playground up in the Berlin Street area, uh, maybe purchasing a piece of Savin's pasture if that were to become available to us. And by spending this money now, and I've checked with Bill and there's no deadline for us to spend this money, we can continue to hold it in our, in our pocket until one of those real pressing needs comes up. But by spending this money now, we're preventing ourselves from being able to address that inequity in the future. So I, in spite of the fact that, you know, I would love to see, um, some additional uses added to Hubbard Park, I don't feel that I can support this purchase.
I attended the park commission with the bicyclist. John was at the whole meeting, I came in late. But I really understood from the bicyclist, doing mountain biking, how much they actually travel city to city, state to state, hunting for trails that are significant. And I've heard a lot about bikes wanting right away to the park. And I'm one of those old users that prefer them not to come into the path, paths that are now existing. So I see this as part of a real economic development. I mean, these are bicyclists that'll come in and stay at our hotel and spend money. So I'm, I'm leaning to supporting it. It's not that I don't want to see more parks everywhere, but this is an opportunity that doesn't come very often to get more land, so.
Thank you, Donna. Just to follow up on that, there is a Trails Committee chaired by Tim Flynn and a number of members on it. I mean, I've been involved in that as well, to look at how we can create a more robust mountain bike and multi-use trail network around Montpelier. And just to follow up on Donna's point, it is a significant economic driver of activity in Stowe, Waitsfield, Northfield, and then of course, the Northeast Kingdom's kind of the poster child for northeast, if not the US, uh, that we have really missed out on here. And, uh, so there's a large group of, of mountain bikers. And then just not even talking about the recreational benefits for residents here to have. And so there's a real link, a missing link, so a couple of things, I used to talk for a while about that, but just to focus on this parcel, there's a real missing link from downtown. There's really no way to get from, on a mountain bike from the downtown zone anywhere. And this is an opportunity to avoid the kind of challenges, uh, mixed conflicts of users that exist by creating another route that would then go out towards the North Branch. And then there's a proposal now to build a trail network on, in the North Branch Park, which is pretty exciting. And that could be a real magnet for, uh, people from the region. So this is a, a real critical piece, I think, to that whole project. Thank you. And if I can respond to a couple of your concerns, um, because this is something that the park commission and I have thought through a while. And, and I really appreciate your, your interest in serving other neighborhoods. And that is, I will want you all to really know that is high on the park commission and my list. And we've actually sought to do that, uh, a couple of times and have, have been restricted from funding because one of the questions funders want to know is not is, is this the idea of the park commission and I to do something? They want to know there's actually city support for something. And until just this last year, the park commission had a, had a green plan. Now, the Conservation Commission has signed on and they, actually I believe the planning commission has now accepted that as, as a document that, that makes it, uh, part of, of official city plan to serve more neighborhoods. So that enables us to do this fundraising we've been restricted from doing because we haven't had a, a city document to this day. So now we're freed up to do that. Before that, uh, just to hopefully to reassure you, um, uh, we added, in the time I've been here, when, when I first got here, it was a hundred and twenty-five acres, there's now four hundred acres. We added, uh, over, uh, two hundred acres with only two thousand dollars of city funds. So this, this does not represent the, the capacity of the city to, uh, serve other neighborhoods. There is a number of funding sources when, when it's clear that a city, there's a city need and a city serves, that, that will fund the purchase of, of lands. And the park commission and I have been understood in that, and maybe I'm incorrect in, from what I understand of the Park Impact fee, but our reading is that the Park Impact fee isn't used within a certain amount of time. It does, it, it can be, uh, returned to the users now.
If they request it.
If they request it. So it makes it vulnerable and, um, so it- If they request it. So it makes it vulnerable. And so it.
Otherwise.
Right, otherwise we keep it. So there's a certain amount of vulnerability. It's, it's unlikely, but it's, but this is an important project. And it, it's, to the Park Commission and I, it seems like the best use.
So is it, so it's fair to say that a large portion of the acres that we've added were funded through other sources? Those are grants?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And there, to be honest, there may be, with the current administration, there may be, it may be harder to access some of those funds.
Fair.
John?
Oh, sorry, Donna.
You mentioned maps. At the commission meeting, they talked about the green print?
Yes.
And I would be really helpful to share with the whole council, the comprehensive look that the commission does of the whole city.
Yes. The Park Commission has looked at the city from, and the Conservation Commission, from a couple of different viewpoints.
I've looked at the green print.
Yes.
And, and that's where I'm getting my, you know, oh my gosh, why are we focusing all of this effort on, and money on just this one portion of the city?
Right.
It, it's clear from that green print that there is a huge amount we could be doing for the rest of the city.
And, and we plan on doing it. And the, we plan on doing it. It's part of.
Well, I'm just telling you that this is kind of the last money I think you'll be able to get from the council on.
Yeah.
So, and that's, it's, it's not, is this a good thing? Is, is this the best thing that you can deal with that $14,000?
Right. And the last thing I'll say on that, unless I'm asked, is, is part of what we wanna do is Hubbard Park is not just a neighborhood park, but it's really, it's the park in Montpelier that attracts people. It's listed on TripAdvisor as a, one of the top reasons to visit Montpelier. It's, it's really attracted, we attract people from out of state, all over town. They come to the tower, they come there. And, and one thing we wanna do is make sure we take care of that well before we add new parts as well. And right now, there's a certain amount of conflict. And it's our, our estimation to take care of it well. This is, this is needed to reduce the conflict.
Well, it looks to me like this is the sort of deal that probably takes a while to put together and you're being, been very patient waiting to find acreage that's directly abuts existing park at a price of just under $2,500 an acre.
Yes.
Seems like a pretty good value to me. And I have no doubts that the Parks Director will use his drive and creativity to ensure that other uses, like bicycle usage or reducing conflicts in the park, will happen on this land. I'm comfortable moving to authorize the Parks Department to move forward with the purchase of private property adjacent to Hubbard Park.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in here, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it. And Rosie, appreciate you raising your concerns. I know that's not always easy to do, but.
Thank you all.
Thoughts, so. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, move to Budget Workshop.
So, you know, I sent out an email earlier today. We don't have a set plan. It's really what you guys wanna do. I didn't know if we wanted to move down to the table, have the folks come up to the front row. We emailed out a bunch of presentations. We're not planning to go through them unless anybody would like us to. But it was there to prompt any questions that people have. And, you know, we've, so it didn't seem to be a long list of questions we were asked before the holidays. So we just got, I think, everybody here and are willing and.
I mean, I'll just say, to say, I think you've done a great job putting this budget together. And I don't wanna create an expectation that we're gonna spend a huge amount of time, you know, dissecting it, because it seems to me you met the council's objectives we set out, you know, set a given rate and create a budget within a certain figure that meets the council's policy objectives. And it seems to me you've done that. So, I mean, I don't wanna foreclose any discussion, but also don't wanna create an expectation that we need to always spend days and evenings going through.
Believe me, Mr. Weir, we're not, we're not demanding that you spend a lot of time.
I'm just gonna say that generally. I'm sure you would be happy.
But we, we certainly understand it's our duty that the, you know, you folks will, once you adopt this budget, it becomes council's budget, not the manager's budget. And to the extent that people have questions and wanna learn more about it, you know, we wanna make sure we're available and set aside time, aside tonight with nothing else on the agenda to have that conversation to the extent that you wanna have it.
Jeff? Justin? Do you wanna say?
Would we rather say it in the?
Do you, Donna, did you wanna move to?
I like that, but I know how resistant you are.
I'm, I'm happy to move.
I'm fine with that. Maybe a brief discuss, oh, I don't know what it's gonna be. Well, first, let's just.
I guess I would just echo what you said, that this feels like a really smooth and functional budget process from my perspective. We've set a goal and city managers achieved that goal of 1.9 with the assumption of half a percentage growth in grand list. Additionally, the scheduled increase to capital improvements is included in this budget. I'm feeling really positive about this process right now. I'm happy to take any presentations or, but I'm pretty comfortable.
Well, maybe just to kick it off, I would remind you that there's two, you know, I sent out an email. One of them's a $100 item for Wrightsville.
Right.
You know, we can either just add it or, I don't think that's a big, but we did get the request for $28,200 from Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. And I assume that they would wanna come and talk about that, but that is not in the budget. So if that were to be considered, that would be a new item in the budget, just to be clear about that. And we do have Green Mountain Transit scheduled for the 24th. That's the only time they could make it. They were on the last meeting. We bumped them because of zoning. They couldn't make it tonight or next week.
And that's the night that we would have to.
That's the final vote. So.
Yeah, so I guess I would.
So I did ask them to give us some written information on, on that. So just, those are pending items that are.
Yeah.
I really feel like we need to hear from the CBPSA. If they're, if they're now asking for a budget allocation, I'm not comfortable, given where.
They plan to come in.
Do we know when?
We just got the email, you know, I got, I was out last week. It came in last week. I just forwarded it to you. But we, we would need to schedule. It would have to be the next week or.
Yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting to allocate funding without hearing what the plan is, because I, I think there is no plan right now that any of us, I, I don't think the council's been made aware of any new plan. I read something in The Times/Argus several weeks ago now, but that's all I've heard. So if there's any request for more funding, I think they need to come with a pitch.
And this point, before, because I had a.
I agree with that. I just, out of respect for the department heads, if, if, I think we should use the focus this time and, and if they do wish, have, present any relevant information. But certainly I'm happy to have those conversations about specific unknowns that the city manager has recommended in this proposal.
I just wanted to make sure.
Side line?
Laid it out there.
Late today, tonight, or some other night.
And I, I just wanna add my voice to that, perhaps a stronger one, because I know there've been concerns at Berry. But just to say, I will strongly oppose any effort to put that funding on the ballot. I haven't seen any, any rationale offered for it. And I think this is now a board that's in search of a mission. The original mission hasn't shown itself to pan out. And there's no other communities that seem to be willing to support it. And I would strongly oppose funding. Now, I don't, Sammy said that, I'm not sure we have any role.
That's right.
Do we, the, the board? So it will be a, a matter of, you know, just making comments to the public. I could have now, looking in hindsight, kind of regret having ceded that authority, because I think it looks like it's, I don't feel like it's being proposed responsibly to be funding something that is far afield from the original mission of the authority. So I would just join the concerns that have been expressed in Berry and say, from my perspective, I don't think it's a well-thought-out plan. And I, I would strongly oppose funding for that, continued funding for the authority. Donna?
The Public Safety Authority has reached out and tened the agreement with the Capitol Mutual Aid on which the Capitol West Dispatch contracts are from, so that we would have a three-party. We would be bringing them into the Public Safety Authority to join Montpelier and Berry if they stay in. And then what the Capitol West Group is, is about, I'm gonna say 31 towns, 28 towns, it's somewhere in there. Towns that have joined together for FAR departments, as well as for dispatch through the Capitol West contract that Montpelier Dispatch police handle now. But the agreement would be that the mutual FAR aid, the Capitol West Mutual FAR aid, would be the municipal joining us. And we would work together on infrastructure of towers and equipment. And that from there, we would hope then to integrate more services. So there is a plan that's gonna be coming towards you. And it is true, we prefer to have the support of the councils, but we are our own entity. And hence, we can go on the ballot without your support, which we prefer not to. And what that amount is, is just to have the administrator there to facilitate the joining of mutual FAR and aid, no, FAR and mutual aid, that's the name, along with then going into the bonding. And the bonding then is a commitment that we would have all the towns long-term instead of on these short contracts that we now have. So that's a short story.
And that's, I think, the concern, is that it's January 3rd, and we're being asked to propose, or at least to act on, respond to a proposal that we still haven't seen in, you know, the few short weeks. And it just seems to me that is indicative of the problem with this authority. That, I mean, it was well-intentioned. I don't wanna begrudge the incredible amount of work that went into, you know, trying to make this work. But the fact is, it just hasn't. And I think at some point, we need to stop putting good money after bad and say, this was an experiment, that we tried to make work, it didn't. And let's, you know, call it a day. So, any questions? Anyway, okay, so shall we?
If I can get them for next meeting or people work out on that next week?
I have some thoughts on other parts of the budget.
Let's do that.
If we just wanna jump right in.
Sure.
So I was concerned, we heard repeatedly that the building inspector is going to be over capacity this year. And that's one that it seems like a pretty, hopefully an easy solve, because if the, if there are more things that need to be inspected, we're getting more fees in. So should that happen, we should have additional revenue. And I wanted to talk a little bit about what our plan is for that. So could we use those, could we plan to use, if there's increased demand, increased fees, could we plan to hire a temporary or contract inspector? Or could we contract with a neighboring city or town to use their inspector for, I, I just wanna know, this seems like an, an issue, and I wanna know what our plan is.
So we did spend a lot of time on that, both, you know, Bob and Mike are both here. We, we don't have any funding in the budget for that. We did anticipate some new fees. Some will hit this year, some, you know, some are actually gonna hit during this current fiscal year, when they pay the building fees, even though the inspections don't carry forward to the next year. The strategy that we left our team with was Bob actually was working to get certified in building inspection and to provide assistance that we're already handling. And he's always gonna stretch some of the fire department. We wanna do it within, to see if we could do it within, that way, within existing resources. But I think a fallback plan would be to come back to the council some point with the revenue service and say, we need to hire on. But that was a, one of the lengthier, for, for the new council members, by the way, we, we've changed the way we do our budget in the last few years. We used to be the traditional everyone handed in a budget and we went through it all. And now we basically, I joke, but real, actually lock it, but we put everybody in a room for about two days. And it's all decided together. And there's a lot of, it's actually great to listen, to watch people say, you need this more than I do. And it's, it's really worked very well. But, so, our team struggled with this one, and that was where we came down. But I, they're both here if they wanna speak more directly to it.
Yeah, just currently I'm scheduled to get the training for, right now, the first two weeks of April, at the National Fire Academy, what we're doing at the Vermont Division of Fire Safety, who traditionally has taught those classes, that's where Chris got his training, was through them, are, they're not putting on a class this winter. But they're looking around New England to see if there's something sooner than April that I can get into.
Okay.
So then I would also be certified.
Great. I just wanted to flag it, because it kept coming up as a concern. And, and we'd heard it, you know, prior that this was gonna be an issue. So I wanted to make sure we had a plan.
So our thought then would be, when, when I did, then the major projects would fall to Chris. So Chris would do One Taylor Street. He would do those. I would then pick up the smaller, the decks and the garages and, you know, throughout the summer. I, I would be responsible for the smaller projects. It would relieve Chris of his health officer, Chris is now the deputy health officer. It would relieve him of his deputy health officer duties, and I would take all of those. And.
Bob is currently the health officer.
Right.
Right, yeah. So we're, we're looking for a way to relieve Chris, so he can then focus just on those five or six main projects. And I would.
Okay. That sounds reasonable and acceptable. I just wanted to talk for a second.
It's disappointing just the way the budgets work for, for the, the funding as it comes in, because, you know, there's a chance we could get a really large amount of money in fees. I mean, it could be, you know, $200,000 in fees that we could collect, which would be more than enough to hire another full-time person. But, you know, if all those applications come in, in April, May, and June, then they're all in this fiscal year. But we need somebody for next fiscal year.
We could reserve that.
And when we open those books, we don't have the money, because the money was actually booked in last year's book.
Well, I.
There is ways we can do.
I guess, yeah, I would press that we would reserve that and.
Yeah. So we, we think there's ways of, of making something, of having possibilities. We didn't, we didn't find a solution. But we did wanna make sure you were aware.
We're not sure how great it is, but.
Well, and I, there was also a mention in one of the memos about how the, the junk car ordinance and the nuisance building ordinance was increasing workload. And so I would be curious at some point to hear back from you about Bob, about how much that was, you know, how many man-hours that that was actually adding. And, you know, the council had expressed some willingness to reconsider some of those in the future if it was proving too difficult. So.
Yeah, I, I can talk to Chris, Chris about that. And keep it in mind that the big is gone. You know, that took a lot of Chris, the Conalodge took a lot of Chris's time. So that, you know, that has been cleaned up. The, I think it's 34 Berlin Street, the house, you know, that has been taken care of. We're actively pursuing a solution to the situation on, it's Route Two, Route Two Galison Hill. We're actively pursuing some means of getting that cleaned up.
And you recall the strategy that you all agreed to, you sort of prioritize the projects and work at one, when one gets cleaned up, move on to the next one. So we're not really trying to handle multiple properties. And I don't think we've had a lot on the junk cars. We just had the one.
We just had one, yeah.
I just saw it mentioned in one of the memos, so.
And we get, you know, I mean, occasionally, you know, complaint from a neighbor of junk. We had one on Hubbard Street, but we were able to, to take care of them. So, you know, right now, we're able to take care of them as they come in. You know, the big, you know, the three big ones, two of them are taken care of. And, you know, we have that situation that we're, we're trying to come up with a solution. It's, it's a difficult.
And the concern in the memo was really just to address the fact that moving into a, a busier workload season means, an already stretched thing means that this may be something that just gets almost no attention when Caldonia Spirits and French Block and the hotel and One Taylor Street are all being inspected, that, that maybe nothing happens in response to complaints.
Well, I would just, and I assume others as well would be interested in, in hearing back from you, you know, if that turns out to be an issue. And please, please give us your, your feedback on that.
Yeah. And I, and I feel comfortable that this summer I'll be with a few. And there's a few shifts going, you know, there's shift, a few of my duties to Chris Hatburn, who's our.
They probably don't know Chris.
Chris is the Public Safety Administrator, works part-time, or full-time, shared between police and fire. She does ammo spilling, shifting some of what I do to.
Administer.
Great. So that was the only specific concern that I had, if others wanna, if there's anything. I have two other things I wanted to talk about, but.
I just wanted to acknowledge the Community Justice Center. I learned today, through my other life during the day, that the CJC is starting some new desperately needed programming in the Washington County area. And I, I really commend the CJC for that. And I commend the council over the years for investing in that. The programming will be for domestic violence offenders. And it's such a necessary thing that we need here in Washington County. And the CJC here is stepping up to fill the need. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Justin?
I had a small police facilities question or proposal, and just wanted to verify with the chief. I know that earlier this year, there was a little bit of concern around some facilities condition issues. I'll just say my own, in regards to three basic issues. But I wanted to just confirm that these were either being addressed, or that you as a team had made a decision that they weren't a high enough priority to make it in this budget, or if this council should be considering making any adjust, small adjustments. or if this council should be considering making any small adjustments to accommodate these. The first being the flood resilience. And I think that without actually putting a rubber cap on a pipe, there's a sump pump in an elevator shaft that if there was power being supplied with our generator, we have redundancy there with the generator, that we wouldn't have any water problems in the lowest levels of the police station. But there's a possibility that if, well anyways, that there's a possibility that water could enter the police station. That's one. The other is if that happens, there's a fair amount of electronics, computers and servers that are on that lower level and that potentially are vulnerable to those floodwaters. If there was some sort of a crisis or emergent emergency situation, it would be really important that we probably have those, you know, those would remain intact and it would be fairly expensive to replace. At the time, it sounded like that there was a cost associated with relocating some of those electronics, maybe to a higher story or to the top story, with the costs of, at the time, I think around under $100,000 certainly. And then lastly, that there was some ceiling tiles that had water damage and well, well-worn carpet in the station. And I just wanted to raise those issues again and, you know, find out if those were included in this budget cycle or if those had been excluded.
There are much of that. For example, as of even right today, the community room is being repainted. And that's going to, that's happening right now. Then when that is done, new carpeting will be in the community room. Last year, we already re-carpeted the patrol room and we did the full remodel of communications. The completing that project is, part of that money is also concluded in this year's $6,000, I believe, in FY19. So that'll at least have the carpeting project complete. As for the flood hardening, we did a lot of, thanks to Public Works, did a lot of research and tried to evaluate what was happening. So for example, in the May flooding, which is a flash flooding situation that we had in 2011, May of 2011, that was when Berry City Public Safety became an island. And we had two, fire department had two pumps going in our basement. And we were heavily concerned that a lot of things happening. We identified that problem and just from a perspective, the water level was 17 feet down at Cemetery Gage during that flood. That was a substantial flood. Downtown was flooded, if you recall. And then when Irene hit, after we've identified the problem, we were bone dry. And we were 19 feet of floodwater during that rain. So we, so we, we can, there's no electronics sitting on the ground. There was a proposal in place that was not acted on as far as our landlines and the computer that supports those. Much of that, much of that system has since changed. And, but we have not relocated all the electronics upstairs. Our radio system itself, though, is upstairs, is on the second floor. So as far as that, I'm pretty confident that we are in pretty, pretty, pretty good shape as far as that goes.
I guess it's not really a question so much as, I mean, I know that all the departments really do great work. One of the things that I would love to see, and I don't, this is like one of the few times a year that we see you get to talk about things in general. And so I'm just going to put my plug in for more graphs. I just, I want more data about, like, how we're doing.
Sure.
And I don't necessarily do that right now.
I didn't see those in our report. Did I miss it?
No.
Oh, okay.
I save them, I save them for the annual report.
Okay, fair, fair.
So yes.
But I do, I do love, I do love, you know, the more graphs, the better.
So real quick highlights, you know, looking, now that I'm full year, unfortunately, we had the armed robbery on the 27th. So Montpelier, we kicked off 2017 with a murder, Marcus Austin. And then we almost ended up, we ended up within our robbery. But everything in between was, was really good. So for example, burglary across the entire year cut half, 50%. Our total crime rate in Montpelier is down 13.3%. These numbers are just absolutely outstanding. This is the first year in three years we have not had an overdose fatality that we, so it's, it's, things are overall coming, coming together considering, you know, we technically have been understaffed for a year as well. But there's some other things that we've had in place and some partnerships that have allowed us to be successful on the police side. But any community, the police don't get all the credit for that. I mean, that's just one piece, but it's certainly our primary responsibility is to do what we can to control crime. But it's everything from, you know, well-engineered streets, lighting, but really an involved community. That's why Coffee with the Cop has been such an important program for us.
Saving the skunks that were trapped in the yogurt cups was really.
Those are those human interests.
That was like the highlight of my Facebook viewing that day.
You know, so, but it's just, and I just want to say, while all of that comes together, you know, the rec department, everything, and that's why, in fact, when they'll talk about the Budget Congress, we're so proud of it, is how we do this. Because we know that it's not just any one of our departments that make Montpelier unique. That it's how it all fits. And that's something that we're, as all departments, we're proud of. So, but those are some of the real big highlights from the crime, the crime scene stuff. And so I, but I think the real concern, and it hasn't really changed that much this year from last year, but it's what's on the horizon. It's not, you know, it's somewhat bleak from the randomness of mass violence to the resources of, you know, how do we keep, how do we keep supporting special events in Montpelier? Most are non-crime related and are very peaceful, but that might not, may not always be the case. And our officers are getting burnt out. You know, they're not, they have not had weekends sometimes when we've had. This winter was particularly bad, just a lot from a political standpoint and a lot of protests, a lot of rallies, from climate to, of course, the Women's March, that there may be an annual, annual event. I'm anticipating not to the same magnitude. But nonetheless, you know, the first things that we did after the Women's March, we, we had Vermont Homeland Security, Emily Harris, do an after-action review. And I had just talked to, as many people as I could, from, you know, our Secretary of Commerce, former Burlington Police Chief, Chief Scherling, and said, like, how did you do it when you had, you know, 40,000 people on the waterfront? And he said, well, I get a lot of parallel cities, streets running. You know, a lot of things that we just don't have in Montpelier. So those are, those are real concerns. You know, NYPD, New York City is just adding 1,500, you know, bollards to prevent the nuclear assaults in Berry Streets. I know there's always conversations that pique a lot of interest in Montpelier. But hey, at some point, do we make, you know, part of State Street, you know, a minor, a mini church street? You know, a lot of that has, you know, a lot of safety potential to the better. But these are, these are considerations. I mean, we haven't, everything we do is based on what is the intelligence, what information do we have at the time? So you haven't seen, you know, a fleet of sand-laden dump trucks. That could happen at any time in Montpelier. We need to be prepared for that. It's my responsibility as well as, you know, Chief Gallon's. When we look at any of these big events, what's at stake? And we have to, you know, really be thoughtful. And at the same time, not also creating a, you know, anything that's going to have too much of that balance of a military state of, to what makes Montpelier unique. And it's, and it's balanced and it's, you know, I do the best I can to get it right. And we've got, and so, so that, that is, you know, the technology and also how long it takes to get a qualified police officer and dispatcher, you know, up and trained when we lose one. You know, the vacancy that we have, we're going to be filling with it by taking a dispatcher who wants to be a police officer. And, you know, so that'll be happening this year. But that vacancy occurred in June of 2017. And by the time she's on field training in the police academy and on her own, will be the fall of 2012. And then also, we have retirements on the horizon within, you know, less than three years. You know, one of our detectives will be retiring, I anticipate sometime this year. That's a lot of experience. You know, I'm going to be retiring within three years. The captain's going to be retiring within three years. And so also, I'm just concerned that do we have the right number of officers? As well as, we have been able to ever so slightly but increase bike patrol. We have two officers now that are on the bike. And that's something, there was a time when we had three officers dedicated to bike patrol. So it's, and although crime is on the decline right now, but again, we have to always make sure what can we, what's going to be sustainable long-term. And that's where the challenge really comes from, as far as do we have the rosters? And, you know, I've expressed multiple times to the city manager and to, during the Budget Congress process, that, you know, for FY20, you know, we'll be asking for a 17th police officer. And understanding what that means financially.
I'm really glad that your graphs or data are so positive. With Safe Catch and with all the opiate addictions, how is that going? You said no deaths, but what's the rest of the story?
Well, we have a meeting coming up next month with all the medical. It's a, I think it's quarterly. Chief Bumpyard will be joining me on that one as well. But the last word that I had from Deborah Hopkins, who's the director who runs the Vermont Subs U Services, that they have, they were plateaued. In other words, you know, they're not seeing an increase of those seeking treatment and they're meeting the demand.
So people are getting into counseling?
Well, it's, yeah, but there's so many people that we just don't know if they're making it to counseling. And where the other challenge that we always have is that, you know, there's still breakdown when they get to corrections. That do they get the psychological, mental health support? Do they get the substance? We have, you know, we have drug court, there's Safe Catch. And as I told this council many months ago, after the, you know, some, the Vermont Intelligence Center asked, what were we doing differently because of our burglary stats alone? And then I also talked to Dr. Max Schluter about, you know, who's a criminologist. And as far as what's happening, the only real thing that we've planned, you know, program we've done differently was Safe Catch. I said, don't discount it, even though our numbers don't even have, I mean, they're really.
But it's a presence, it's an attitude.
Exactly. And it really, you know, it's something that we're really proud of in Montpelier, that we started it here. Thanks, thanks to Bill and a 60 Minutes clip with Chief Campanello in Gloucester. So, and that, and what, the success that we have had here, that's been relayed to Burlington PD and even to the governor himself directly, I think, so. It's, it's firing on all cylinders again to make sure that we're a healthy community.
And you mentioned a bit about all the demands of the state house and being here and the protests, the marches. And at one point, we asked you to keep track of overtime-related? Because I think we really need to put that into our pilot discussions, heavy time. Is it so unreasonable for us to hold the full responsibility and cost of that? Have you got any numbers on that overtime or can you get it to us eventually?
Well, we just gave, I gave Bill a snapshot of overtime itself, not, just more of the special events.
Yes, okay, special events.
One of the things I will say is that the state police and the cap, and the new chief at the cap at the state house, but they've, they've really picked up the pace, especially with Vermont State Police in the last several years. Because, you know, we certainly have been tapping into their resources, special teams, things like that, more than with our protests and our, and some of the, we had rolled an armored vehicle in Montpelier for the first time last, last New Year's Eve, not this New Year's Eve, but New Year's Eve 2016. So we definitely, it's been a good relationship and I don't feel overworked there. But it's just, when you have 20,000 people or even 10,000 people or what's, or if there's a problem associated with that, even all the state police, I mean, there's 330, you know, there's just not a police option to go around. It's a chronic problem throughout Vermont. Vermont, historically, we have some of the smallest ratios of law enforcement, it's my understanding, for some of the, you know, it's just we're underfunded here. But because of some of the other challenges that we don't have, we've been able to work. So it's gotten a lot better. As a matter of fact, the fire chief and I will be sitting in the command post tomorrow for the state of the state. But the role is really, we're there really as a support. We're not, we're not, it's not, you know, it's not my baby anymore kind of thing, so.
I mean, and you talked about staffing and getting police officers. And it's very hard to get police officers and dispatchers. And every police department in the region has the same issues and you borrow and steal from one another. And the hope was regionally that would be better to pull it all together and to have a more sizable department and more professional development. So that is still hovering out there as one of the positives of the regional system.
Yeah, there's a, it's, it's sent at S273. It's going to be a bill as proposed for the session to talk about. It's basically springboards off the work that was done by Senator Janet White when she went around and talked about public safety on the state. And there is a lot of things there. I know, Bill and I were there for the, and Paco was there for the, that once, the last one had it back in November. Talking about regionalization anyway, and we were not so much looking at the police conversation, at least that was not our interest, as was obviously dispatch. It, in some, in some regard, yes, that, you know, obviously a larger police department can be more with it. But, but also, what is, what are you also inheriting with that new geographic landmass? What are their problems? What's their community makeup? And, and so people have to be clear-eyed to, well, you know, let's talk about the obvious. We were in Berry City, it's two very different communities with very different needs and very different cultures in both areas within the community as well as the police departments. So there would be definite, you know, what you want, changes in how some services have been delivered for a very long time could be impactful. I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing. But you, but when you do that, it has to be in such a way that you're, you know, understanding of there's going to be some changes, so.
But you've also talked when there's burglaries there, there tend to be.
Oh, absolutely.
Drug sales here, so there's a lot of problems that we share, for better or worse.
And we are, even though we're all different departments, we were very close with Berry City. We're extremely close with Vermont State Police and our federal partners. And we have some very unique relationships right now that we've had the last several years, especially with state police, Drug Task Force, and with ATF and FBI. A lot of our drug crime, most of our drug crime is not even prosecuted out of Washington County. It's attorney's office. It's being handled by the US Attorney's, the US Attorney's Office here in Vermont and other states, as well as the Attorney General because of the Drug Task Force work, we're really pushing a lot of that. But, so just because we're different departments does not mean that that cooperative, those cooperative efforts aren't happening.
And you're still one staff under even after you fill that position, right? You'd like to have one more.
I would like to have one more, but we, we will be at our authorized strength of 16 officers, you know, that are working out of that PD.
Just to add quickly to that is that the problem of finding qualified police officers is not unique to Vermont nor to, you know, size of, it's a national issue. And actually, we've been probably more fortunate than others to be able to keep close to a full load. I know there are other Vermont departments that are considered, you know, down multiple people. And, you know, I talked to my colleagues around the country, it's just something that comes up all the time. Because it's, you know, look at the controversies, the stresses, the demands, it's a tough job. And, you know, you're only paid so much. And even if you do, sometimes it's not about the money, it's about the disruption to your life, safety. And, you know, no matter what you do, someone's going to say you're doing it wrong. So it's, it's not easy and we appreciate what they do.
I'd like to circle back to Project Safe Catch and also Coffee with the Cop and just express my strong support for this sort of work. It's so important to, you are really doing all the community building. That's probably part of the reason we're seeing the reduction in crime rates. It ties right into 21st century policing, which I'm also strongly supportive of, particularly transparency and, you know, that openness with the community. And I didn't know, very briefly, Facebook internationally has started to take some positions on either closing accounts or taking digital action in terms of open and clear, transparent communication for a variety of reasons. And correct me if I'm wrong, this came actually from a constituent, but they were saying, you can, the Montpelier PD Facebook page doesn't, as you can see, how many comments have come in.
Right.
But you've chosen not to do that, and I assume there's a very thoughtful and deliberate reason. I didn't know if that's part of-
Yeah, there's several reasons. One is, it's to protect identity of victims of crime, to also make sure we're protecting the digital process. People are just playing nasty. Channel 3 took it on because it's all, you know, what you were seeing is just this evil trolling. And the last thing you want to do is have a person that maybe, you know, get reactions, this person is guilty of X crime and whatever, and that comments are made. You know, and that may be real guilty innocent persons, one side. The other is, you know, it is our, it is our page. It is not intended to show absolutely everything that our department does. So that's why we choose to be constructive about it. You know, we have a complaint process. So when there's a legitimate or perceived legitimate grievance or complaint, they can get a copy of the, you know, how to file a complaint. They're available in the clerk's office, the city manager's office, our department. So that part, that is a clear, it isn't our policy as far as that goes. But our social media is really just a way to push out information to the public.
That makes a lot of sense in hearing you describe. There's a whole bunch of legitimate reasons why you would choose not to make those comments public. I'm somewhat naive in terms of the suite of products that Facebook or other social media sites offer to rural, state, or municipal law enforcement agencies. Does the current, do we, does the city currently have a portion of our budget that's being spent on information that you're receiving from social media sites?
No.
Okay. Is that something in the future that is offered that you might want?
No, we look at, you know, obviously we're part of the city's website, and it's one of those areas that need to work on, I need to work on, or other folks. We've got an incredibly talented and committed team on the Facebook piece. It's Sergeant Nordson oversees it, and we've got three other people underneath that to keep that going. But a lot of it is with any of these technologies and any systems, they're wonderful tools, especially for that, you know, Twitter even. But there becomes an, you create a public expectation of, you know, are you receiving that information with that regularity? So suddenly, you know, and it has to be deep enough in terms of the people that are actually pumping out the information and receiving it, processing it. So you can't just have like one person, "Hey, I'm on vacation this week," and all of a sudden, boom. Hey, what's Montpelier PD doing? So it's one of those things, there's so many-
Yeah, and I guess-
Things we'd like to do with technology that I just, again, I'm trying to balance what I, you know-
Sure.
Putting our, the money where we can get the most bang for our buck in policing, so.
Sure, and I, maybe I just want to make sure I was expressing myself clearly. Not so much curiosity about, like, doing more social media posting or expressing, not that there's anything wrong with that, but other digital tools that are or may be currently available for cell phone tracking or any number, any suite of new digital resources that we do have and are available. And I just was curious if that was anything that we're currently considering or exploring or not?
Uh, no, and a lot of, a lot of the technology is being heavily controlled and regulated almost to the point of a detriment, depending on, depending on what's actually set on. I mean, FBI, ACLU is sitting right here, we have a conversation. But we all know there's, in particular, we don't have license plate readers in Montpelier. And state police just phased them out because they can't afford it. Just, not that it's a bad tool, but they can't afford to keep up with the maintenance of these things. Again, the government pumped out a lot of its money for some of this technology, but then now some of the maintenance contracts are on. So, and we're not a borders, we're not a borders, you know, city. Patient recognition with permanent order vehicles, that was another, you know, the challenge. And drones is another one. Just with the prevalence of drones now, it's just absurd unless there's, you know, an exit situation. We get the Montpelier Police Department does not own a drone or use a drone. And anything else that we do is, any technologies that we may have are, and we would use that technology in full compliance with the state federal law.
Other questions for Bill?
Thank you.
Other questions for department heads or the city manager? Yeah, who is it?
So, I guess this is a sort of, for everybody, I noticed, reading through the reports, the performance measures for some were wonderful. And as particular, I wanted to highlight IT. I really liked those performance measures. They're clear, they're things that IT is responsible for. And you can see, you know, if they accomplish them, then they're doing well. If they don't, then they're not. There were some other performance measures included, though, that were things that departments didn't really have control over or were things where anything less than 100% would be complete failure. So I just want to say for next year, to, I'd like to see a little bit more tweaking of those so that they really reflect what the department specifically is doing and how well they're doing it versus other things outside of their control or just like the baseline job responsibilities, so.
I'll just, thank you for actually for saying that with everybody listening. We've struggled with performance measures since we've tried to implement it. You know, we don't have, just kind of what the chief was saying about, you know, keeping up with social media. We don't have a lot of staff to really spend a lot of time doing measure work the way it really can be done well. Jesse Baker was a sort of a performance measurement expert. It was a tool she brought with her from her prior position. So we tried to have her implement it, and I, you know, we didn't ever quite get it. And we're still working on it, but I think it's, you know, we, I really see it as it's a tool for the departments to manage themselves. And I think we're still struggling to find what's a reasonable amount of things to measure that's actually useful to the departments that, oh, by the way, has the added benefit that we report to the council and public and say, "Here, here how we're doing on this." And so we've gone, in our discussions, is, you know, all the way from, "Let's just phase this out unless it's useful to you individually," to, "Let's pump it up and ramp it up." So we're kind of at that juncture right now, so we appreciate hearing that. Whether it's useful.
I do find them useful if they're things, you know, that-
Means something.
That mean something. In addition, the other, those other pieces of information can be useful data points, but I just, they're not so, for example, let's see. The assessor's office says the number of buildings built. That's important information for us to know, but the assessor's office doesn't really have any control over the number of buildings built. So we're not going to judge them, you know, if there were fewer buildings, and they can't really have a target for number of buildings built. So that should still be included in the reports, but not as a performance measure. Would be my personal opinion.
I completely agree.
Not to pick on the assessor's office.
No, I'll have them.
Doesn't it tell you what, how much time they spend? Don't they have to spend time on those?
I think it's an important data point to know, you know, but I wouldn't judge them, you know, if their target was eight buildings built and we only had seven buildings built. They didn't fail.
I know, I understand that, but I'm just talking about how they spent their time and why they might not have done some other things because they had a busier year this year than last year.
And then I wanted to make a comment that I noticed throughout, there was a general feeling from the department heads that they were being asked to do more and were taking on more big projects. And I felt that as well, kind of looking at our future. And in a city that isn't growing in population, I think that, you know, we kind of have a responsibility to take a step back and say, "Well, we can't really do more." You know, I would love to have whatever amenities all over the city, but if we don't have a population that's growing to support that, we can't continue to add more projects and add more projects, all of which have all this enormous upkeep. You know, they have ongoing costs. And so I just want to put it out there to the department heads that I think there is going to be a point that we need to kind of reevaluate some of those things that we have been doing and take an honest look at future proposals if we don't grow in population to say, "Look, we can't do everything." So if there are, you know, things that we have done in the past that you as department heads don't feel are continuing to benefit, you know, a large portion of the population, next year when we come around to this point, I think it would be really helpful for the council to hear about those things. And I'm certainly really open to hearing about what can we let go of in order to allow us to continue to do everything we want to do. So those are my comments.
I'd like to hear from the community services. Just if you, parks and recreation and senior centers, those are the three, right? Just, just, I just want to hear more personally. In reading this, it's a lot of very specifics, but it doesn't give me an idea about how you've experienced the past year as this new form entity. I guess I want more of a subjective, some comments. How has the year been as a, as a unit, working together?
Thank you. Yeah, so I think revisiting the primary goal of the community services integration was to improve the effectiveness and efficiency of the services that we're offering to the public. And I think really on both of those fronts, we've been doing an excellent job. I think first and foremost, it sort of gave us the kick in the pants, if you will, that we needed to start working together more closely to better serve the public. We are now working very closely together. We meet regularly as a team, both as the whole staff and as the leadership of the department. We've consolidated administrative services, which has had a really positive impact on, a customer calls up, they can now hear about all the services provided by all the departments with one phone call. We're sharing a database now that makes our work easier and provides better services to the public. We have one program guide that has all of the programs that we offer. And we've been able to do more together in terms of staffing. So where one department may not have had a specific expertise, like in facilities management or in fundraising, we've been able to share that across the entire community services department. Also, when one area has more demand at a certain time of year, say during summer camp or recreation, we're able to shift our services because maybe that's a quieter time for one of the other staff people. So we're able to flex in ways that we weren't able to before. That have been really, really powerful, in fact.
Dan covered a lot there. One of the other things that was, that has come along too now is we can take credit cards in-house. The senior center used to use the square, but the system we have now with Rec Track, we can actually run the credit cards right into the system. So it goes right to the payment of the household that's made it. And then we run a report at the end of the month and figure out the credit card fees that have been processed through the Rec or through the senior center. So now it's not doing two separate areas of figuring out how many credit cards came through the register that the senior center used to use. It's all right in one database.
Well, and that's an example of an area where one department was doing something innovative and accepting credit cards and doing online registrations with credit cards, and we've been able to take that across. So now, if you want to book a park shelter, you can pay with a credit card. Couldn't do that before. If you want to sign up for a Rec program online and pay with a credit card, you can do that. There's no convenience fee. It's really easy for people.
Let's see, we had a great year in the parks. And see, we did our first ever summer park festival, which was, this was a wonderful thing. People enjoyed that, and we had our best ever Chinatown Forest this year. A lot of volunteers and great cooperation from Rec and Senior Center. And the community services festival was really helpful in getting Rec and number of volunteers for us to pull up a great event. And the weather really helped too, so that was great. Big hit this fall with the storm damage. A lot of trees fall, maybe every tree's fall. We're still cleaning up the damage in our spare time. Slowed down dramatically, but it's looking like a good winter. It was a good year, a number of challenges, but we've had a lot of volunteers and help and, and, and a good way to stay up.
Do you find some group marketing going on? And when I attend the Parks Commission meetings, I still feel like the Park Commission itself is so isolated. Has that improved? I remember Jesse Baker was there a couple of meetings trying to connect the commission more with other kinds of services that the city offers. Do you think they're getting support?
The Park Commission, I think the Park Commission's doing what they do well. What I think potentially could be even better, and we've talked about this, but we haven't tried it yet, is having a representative from each commission, maybe quarterly with each other, to improve some kind of community communication and look through other ways of cross-pollination to get some work, I'd mind going, but how it cross-pollinating did. So that's awesome, but I think it would be good to do, we've talked about it.
Okay, thank you.
I remember not too long ago, we were sitting around the table trying to frame out what this idea of community services might be. And there was understandably some apprehension about how that whole process would unfold. And I'm glad to hear that there are definitely, it sounds like some positive things that are coming out of this cooperation and synergy. And also would hope that if there are parts that aren't working that, you know, need to be worked out or looked at again, that please encourage you to come and let Bill or whoever is appropriate to resolve those. Because with any new systems, there are benefits and there are things that could be better. So please feel free to do that. And really, what you're doing is the icing on the cake here in Montpelier. If you ask most people what they like best about Montpelier, it's probably something that you guys have your finger on. So thank you for what you're doing.
Well, if the weather keeps up, we should have an ice skating rink, so.
Were they out today and the rink goes in tomorrow? Clearing it this morning? People are very excited about that, I'll just say.
Yes.
Haven't heard any dissension from support for that. And then a few decision makers. Thank you for that, Aaron, for your help with that project. Any other questions for these folks?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much for all your work, for the presence. All right, other questions?
Well, this might be a good time to talk about this, since we seem to have a little bit of time. Is, we had had a conversation briefly about increasing the council's pay, and we talked about maybe increasing it, I think, maybe John, you weren't here that night.
I haven't been here for any discussion, though.
So there was a brief discussion about maybe increasing it at least to the amount where someone could pay a babysitter for the number of hours that they were in actual meetings to try and make the council something that would be accessible for people from a wide range of walks of life to serve on. And so I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation that last year, the council had full council meetings of about 110 hours. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that I'd done that calculation. Now, of course, everyone is also serving on subcommittees as well, and that doesn't address all the hours that you spend reading and prepping for the meetings. But I wanted to put that out there as a piece of information.
I also asked the high school kids what the going rate is for babysitters. And they said it's $20 an hour.
Oh, my God.
I bet my kids are grown up.
Well, see, and that's just about, Ann said she'd like to earn as much as a city council member as she does as a coach at the high school.
Yes, I do.
So that's about the same ballpark.
As a coach.
Yeah.
Well, I'd be reluctant to wade in on this if I wasn't, not going to personally benefit from it as I would have a pecuniary interest. But given that I won't be serving after the next town meeting day, I will say that I think it is important to allow people of all socioeconomic levels to participate. The amount of time that I personally have invested in this is certainly eye-opening in terms of the commitment and what it takes to participate in this way. Certainly something that you have to want to do, or no amount of money would probably make it worthwhile. Using those two pieces of information, it looks like it would put it at about 2,200. Sounds like what you're proposing.
I suppose so. Do we need to decide this tonight?
Presumably, the mayoral salary would be higher as well as it has been in the past, given that there's greater responsibility.
So what you will need to decide at some point is if you can add more money to the budget. And it is, those are specific ballot items, the amounts. So when we, so we have, all of this has to be decided by the 24th.
Why are those, just as a quote of reference, why are they separate ballot items? Is it just political?
I think it goes as far back as I can see in-
Is there a legal basis for it?
I think it was probably more of, I think it's done in most communities. I don't know what the legal basis is, other than, you know- I don't know what the legal basis is, other than, you know, rather than the council setting their own pay, they recommend it and the voters approve it. But I don't, you know, the school board's on there too, although I don't, you know, if they will be under their new configuration.
I certainly think it's best practice to put it before the voters. They have a right to know that people who are serving them are giving themselves a raise. I would just add anecdotally that this year, I believe, the city council's discretionary budget has been reduced by 50 or 60 percent, some significant amount, which would more than cover, I think, in true dollars, the proposed increase. Essentially, not increasing the cost to taxpayers, as the savings will be found by reducing travel or other expenses that, what, I don't know, specific line items, but overall, what the council previously has been budgeted.
And I was.
Somebody asked if we needed to decide this tonight, and I think the answer was no.
I think I'm wrong about $20 an hour. I should go back and ask you. That doesn't sound right.
I mean, I used to make more than that, and not much more than that, but more than that often. And that was almost 10 years ago. So please do, continued research would be.
I'm not convinced about $20, but yeah.
I would also say that from my position, I would rather that the council spend less money on meals for meetings and that kind of thing, you know, those sorts of kind of, those extras, which I think are what makes up most of the council budget. I don't, maybe some of it's photocopying, that kind of thing. So some of those more discretionary things, I would rather we take the money from that and put it into salary, so that someone deciding whether or not they can afford to do this could look at that salary number and say, yes, I can make this commitment, versus not knowing, you know, you're going to get your meal of the retreat paid for, that kind of thing. So I don't know what the math is on that.
Part of the council's budget is also part of the cost allocation system. So is it not? Is not the council? Because I saw some numbers about staff time, so given what allocation, the cost allocation system that Sandy had, every, every department, including the council, had to share its cost of the overhead. I don't think we, we haven't had too many sandwiches.
Well, no, but there's a large, there's an amount budgeted, and we haven't gotten, we left a lot. And I think that's because we've had fewer sandwiches.
So it's advertising, communications, those kind of things, some of our dues and subscriptions to various organizations. We had had a line for other purchase services, which was quite high. That's the one we really knocked down. Printing and binding, travel, transportation's been about the same, meetings. And then miscellaneous, we dropped from $1,400 to $700 because we'd only spent a couple hundred the year before. That's probably the meal stuff, which is, we really don't spend a lot on that. It's rare. Sometimes, because of time.
Right.
For the same reasons that you mentioned, someone, if you're going to have to meet at 5:30, they're like, I can't do it because of me. We'll see. And then.
And in the last fiscal year, the council retrieved, and it drove up a lot of costs. And that was, a lot of that was just alias contract.
Right.
Facilitating that entire process. So there was some meal and room rental fees associated with getting it together. There was really good.
I'd like to see us do more professional development like that.
Well, I don't feel like we need to make a decision on this tonight, but I just wanted to have that be part of the conversation.
Now is timely to raise it.
Is there, I mean, this is something that I'm interested in talking about. I mean, this is, I guess I'm wondering if there are other people that are interested in hammering out a number? That would make sense and we can come up with a proposal. Because I feel like someone's got to, someone's got to figure out what's the right number.
And we even had a citizen or two bring it up.
Right.
So I think it would be good. I'm interested in it.
Okay. Should we have a chat about that and come proposal? We can go from there or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can run that out too, you know, just using the numbers you gave us compared to what, you know, what budget impact would be compared to. It's $1,500 now, right?
No.
It's a thousand a month. Or a thousand a year.
Twelve.
Hundred a month.
Hundred a month.
Twelve hundred. So you're talking $4,800. If you choose 2,000 as a basis, for example, I just, 100 hours at $20 an hour. That's 2,000, so from 12,000, so 800 for six people. That's $4,800. And mayor's at 3,000, I think. Isn't it 3,000? So if you bump that up to 3,500 or something like that, you know, you're talking $5,300 total.
When was the last time it was increased?
Not that long ago, within, say, three or four years, but I don't hold that. It was before.
More than that.
Before John, but it wasn't long before John. It was maybe just a year or two before John. Jim Sheridan pushed it as he was leaving office, because same reason, he was, and it went up. I think it had been, I want to say it was $1,02700, and it went to $1,200 and $2,000 or something like that.
You could also use the annual increase in wage inflation for Vermont over that period of time as another metric for establishing a fair and justifiable increase in salary.
If there's any, you know, staff output that we can provide, let me know if I can help. Kind of coming up with that.
I tell you, the mayor, anybody who's running for mayor, I'm just saying, who's doing that for a little money. Priorities are miscued.
But it does raise a valid point, that there's a barrier to entry for some people that's financial. And this is a strenuous process for everyone involved. There's no doubt that there's a big commitment, and it's more than financial, but.
A couple hundred dollars is a step in the right direction, but probably won't make much difference.
Certainly no one's going to make a decision to run based on salary alone.
That's not a part of my decision-making process.
But that is a luxury that we have.
Yes, true.
And we recognize that. Yes, yeah.
Okay, other issues for tonight?
Well, I know usually you say these sort of comments for the council reports, but since we have the department heads, I just really want to thank you all for the good work you do. And this last week, DPW was out with a broken main line, and the cold, cold, thank you very much, the car department was out, kudos, the police had an armed robbery. I mean, you know, it's all sorts of things happening, and you've all been there. So thank you all very much.
Structure fire as well.
Yeah, that's alarming.
Okay, great. That's it for tonight. We'll move on.
There's not much to move on. So as we're wrapping up the budget, then what, what are, we've got CBPSA, which will be kind of a separate issue, and harbor transit. So is there, the only pending budget adjustment issue is possible council pay? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
No, I mean, it's fine. I just wanted.
Well, actually, I do have, I'm sorry, I forgot. I do have one other question, which is something that we have talked about in the past, was for the next fiscal year, doing re-examining our ordinances, and that that was going to require some additional legal fees. And I just want to confirm that, there's nothing in for that.
Specifically.
That's, that's something that I would want to consider, you know, because it is, it is sort of an inherent foible of the process that we are setting the budget now for next year's goals. And if we think that that's something that we want to do, I would want to, I mean, that's something that we sort of pulled back from this year. So, you know, if, if that's what it takes, just if we could get an estimate for what you think it might cost to add that in, that would, I think that would be really helpful.
We'd have to talk, but I don't have any idea right now. So we could, or how many, you know, if we could do some or what.
Sure, yeah.
Tony, when we mentioned looking at ordinances before, you talked about getting an intern that would really be massive undertaking. Do I remember that correct?
Yeah, but I have no idea.
It was before legal, just to do some of the processing and pulling things out.
I just think about the pain that we, John, one of the goals, all the rest of justice appropriate, to get us more of that sort of community. And I'm just thinking about the dog ordinance, that, how much that one ordinance took, because that's the first one that we've got. And putting a sort of option, you know, right there in different ordinance.
And a good, and a good example of that was, we all and staff take as much hit on this as everybody, but we set a goal of being more restorative and incorporating restorative justice whenever we could in ordinances. And then we passed, you know, the building demolition ordinance, and we didn't put any restorative options in there at all. So we just, so, you know, again, I think we got to, we got to look through and.
Well, we can use the league too. We don't, and we have a membership there for a reason.
To a point.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't, they'll give you quick advice. If they, if they do a more significant review, you still pay them.
Okay.
For additional service.
But it just seems like the initial level might not need the lawyer versus the last one.
I think it's a lot of, it's a lot of time of somebody.
Oh, but you could potentially come back to us with some estimates. Okay, thank you.
All right, we all say that? Okay, council reports. Rosie.
I will pass. Just an early warning that on January 31st, there will be like a tree festival that the tree board is putting together. So looking forward to getting more details from them about that, but just wanted you all to know, January 31st.
Pass. I've already said thank you to everybody.
Jess?
Pass.
All right, well, that's quick. I just had one thing, Bill and I talked about the annual report. We voted on our consent agenda a couple of weeks ago to continue doing it on electronic basis, to approve the bid. And he and I talked beforehand about whether we ought to put something out to the community to ask how they'd rather, how they would like to receive it. My sense is that people don't read it, but we do have ironically these boxes that we do order that's set, because they don't go to everybody, and so people just don't think to go get one. So I suggested maybe we put something out on front porch forum or some other way, just to ask people what they think. Do we want to go back to getting hard copies, or do we like the idea of just doing it all kind of thing? I know it's a lot of resources, but I also don't think they get, I don't think they get read. So that's the trade-off in my view.
What was interesting with the bid, it cost us as much to have printed copies with the digital and to have just digital. Maybe we don't need as many, but I think we should always have a few.
Well, I think the issue, the real issue is, you know, we'll probably, if we continue the way we're going, we'll probably just keep calibrating until we get the right amount, what's the right that amounts.
Going to be not very many.
Right. And it's, and over time, it's going to be less and less, I think, when we, it's typically the older population that asks for the books, versus delivering them to the homes.
Right.
There was some sentiment that when they just showed up, people looked at them and read them, even if just for a few minutes, it was like, oh, it's the city government. But the counter concern was a lot of wasted paper, they get thrown away, or, you know, recycled or whatever. And, you know, are they worth the value? So a few years ago, the council, we saved a little bit of money, but a lot of it was also for environmental reasons, to just cut back and go the electronic version. But, you know, it's harder to tell, I mean, whether people are actually going online and looking at it, or whether they're, you know, we do have leftover books in the places we put them out, and we've got tons of them here still. So, so I think that's the question, I hope.
Yeah, no, it is. I guess there's maybe just the prominent question is, maybe we just ask Jamie to put something out on front porch forum and get feedback and see what people want to do.
Front porch forum and Facebook.
And Facebook, yeah, exactly.
That's the difference, but that, again, you miss the people who are most likely to want it. That's all.
Well, and the bridge article, then, would be the other place to put it.
Well, we have some of the most engaged and informed citizens here in Montpelier, but I think Thomas Jefferson really said it best when he said, "If a nation expects to be ignorant and free in a state of civilization, it expects what never was and never will be." And so the more that we can put the information out there to help people be even better informed, so much the better.
Okay, well, I should mention, I would just mention that we, you know, our office is probably the number one place people come for that, and we haven't, we haven't really had any issues with people complaining about it not being delivered. Should we ask, or should we just?
I think it's worth an ask. I like getting people involved in the process. Ask, ask.
There's no harm in asking.
You'd ask Jamie to put it on front porch forum and Facebook and.
It will be done.
You know, another way to frame the question is, where would you expect the annual report to be available? Because it might actually be really convenient to have it at, I think some people expect it to be at the library, probably, like if there are places throughout the city where we can be dropping them off, you know, thinking at cafes or the co-op, or, you know, places where people are just sitting, that those might, I mean, that's going to be tops, 20 copies. But just knowing if, if people would appreciate having them at those locations.
That's a great idea. The pass-through rate too, right, is huge. If you put in 10 copies in Capitol grounds, you're going to get way more participation than mailing 20 copies to 20 individuals.
Could you ask it open-ended like that? Like where would you, where in the community would you expect to find it?
Yeah, you could, I mean, if you're just doing a Google form, you could leave it open-ended and let people submit their own answers, or you could have.
Check off some.
Check boxes, like if you had some places that we.
And then other.
Anticipated and other.
What, or you list, let's say you list 10, your top three places to pick it up.
Sure.
You have to focus on where they really.
Yeah, either way.
Online.
Yeah.
I just do want to add that historically, it has been delivered at the library, the senior center, it's available here in the clerk's office.
Post office.
Post office, and also during the actual annual meeting here as well. So there have been historical drop locations, and we certainly keep that in mind.
Yeah, we hadn't gone into businesses, you know, public places, but if businesses wanted them, and you're willing to take them as a.
All right, so would that, oh, Jen, sorry.
I just want to say a couple things. I've all probably read in the paper, my new big cause is election security. I went out and got certified as a penetration tester. It's a very cool title. It's certified ethical hacker. So anyways, I'm all about that. But the other thing I just wanted to mention, which is that you all and everybody who's listening is invited to a party that I'm going to have here upstairs, my 50th birthday party. I'm in serious, I have serious mortality issues, so I figured the only way to deal with it is just to have a blowout open to the public. It's going to be February 17th upstairs, going to have a cash bar. I've got distribution rights to show Stop Making Sense. And when that's not playing, there'll be music. Could be great. Everybody mark your calendars. You won't be able to miss it by the time I'm done with it, but you all are the first to know.
I don't know if I could, I was going to say, I don't know if I could stop, although Stop Making Sense kind of goes with the job, doesn't it? Just that next meeting, all we have on the agenda right now is the TIF discussion and wastewater recovery. And we're not sure how long that part will be after. We're, so.
Can we get the wastewater stuff, water recovery stuff, well in advance? Because it seems like a pretty complex.
It is pretty complex, and we're, so we're trying to figure out where we're at with that, and, you know, we have many of the same questions some of you have raised.
Well, I think TIF as well. I think we, I'm sure it's, we were going to get that at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're working on TIF now. But the, so the good, the point is, that's all we've got. So if you want to talk, and if wastewater stuff is shorter than anticipated, if.
I don't think that's likely.
It might be.
Oh, okay.
It might.
All right.
And the dog ordinance?
We're considering all options, including requesting delaying that, because we're not as satisfied with all the information either. So, but we haven't decided that yet. So if that's the case, I'll just, we'll give you an update on where we're at and what we're thinking and, you know, so sneak preview. So that could considerably open. So any of this budget stuff, we could finish up next week, is what I'm trying to say. So we'll try to get some of these answers. And you could have a short meeting.
Which is nice, we have four meetings this month, so I don't think we have to feel guilty about.
We don't have one on the 17th.
Oh, we don't?
We're still holding that.
Third, well, if we need it.
So we can, can we let the 17th go?